Daddy, it's chocolate.
Hey, I see you washing.
(laughing)
Shh.
(laughing)
Weaning up. Oh, man.
I'm gonna drive my bike. Okay?
Yeah, I'm on it.
Yeah, I'm on it.
Unfortunately, we don't need an income.
That's for sure. I can only imagine you were two days in that office. You ain't talking either.
Huh?
Have you seen him? Oh, hilarious. I mean, that's ridiculous.
So like photo shots. Freaking, or was it, um?
You gotta see it. Actually, I do.
Have y'all exited yet?
No. We did have one in here. We got one now. You get a motion, uh, executive session back in regular session. Somebody. Enjoy it.
Yes.
Commissioner Dorsey made a motion second.
Second.
To Commissioner Teasley. All in favor? All right. We'll wait on Commissioner Bennett then. All right, we're back in regular session, Commissioner Bennett. Get a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Someone second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. In discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five of eight. Uh, remarks by invited guests, committees of authority, we have none. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads, we have none. County administrator's report?
Uh, just to let everybody know that, uh, I'm not exactly sure when DOT is gonna start replacing the two bridges on, uh, on Henderson Church Road and Union Hill. I get them confused every time. School Road? Church Road. Union Hill Church Road. Uh, they've worked out the, uh, the detours, which is not real big on those two roads. They should start the next month or two. And that's all I got.
What about the bridge down here? Have you heard anything?
I have not heard anything from DOT on the, on the Reed Creek Highway Bridge.
I heard that the money was there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if the money has already been, I guess, appropriated for a project, don't they usually do it within a certain amount of months?
Yeah, I mean, the meeting myself and Mr. Dorsey was at, it was listed in '25. Is that the year they had it listed on that list? So that may still be the schedule.
They'll give us at least six months.
Correct, yeah, they'll send us all the detour information. We'll have to put.
Could that be the 51 going toward Byersville? That bridge?
Hmm.
That's what they got, that's what is printed. The DOT with, huh?
Seems like it was right down here.
No, it was the first bridge here.
But the DOT is notorious for moving dates out. I mean.
Uh-uh. 51 North, that's Reed Creek Highway.
I'll make some phone calls tomorrow and find out.
Because it just says.
Yeah, we had a discussion while we were sitting at the table, so that's why I'm 99, I'm not so sure Reed Creek Highway.
It just said, on the plan, it just says State Route 51. It don't resonate. South or west.
But there's not one on 51 North. Uh, 51 Byersville, what? Where the bridge at?
Trussel.
Trussel Bridge.
Oh. That's not, is that county 51 or is that county 77?
It's 51.
It's 51.
Okay. But as I understand it, that meeting engaged from the council, that it was Reed Creek Bridge.
It's kind of confusion. I mean, because we've got two.
Probably both of them, well, both of them are basically the same age.
Yeah, basically.
Okay. Is that all you had?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll go to chairman's report. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations, Commissioner Dorsey, for, uh, winning his election. Uh, and Commissioner Bennett is still in the race. He is to be over in November, but, uh, congratulations, Mr. Dorsey. His, his race is, was over in the Republican primary. Uh, also, I'd like to say that I want to commend our hats off to Jason Haley. He had an idea and, and got with the Hart County Charter Systems and worked out an avenue for, uh, to create firefighter 101 as a pathway or for a career in the school system. And they have done a tremendous job. We had 24 folks to enroll in that. Uh, we've had, we had 18 to graduate. And Hart County is gonna benefit 16, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to be firefighters in our county from this idea that Jason Haley had. So I just want to commend him, and I mean, uh, and we've all been at fire meetings and trying to brainstorm and figure out which way we can go to recruit more firemen, because we, we still need more. And they're having signups and they're gonna have another class, so. Uh, but I thought this was a great start, and, uh, I think Franklin County benefited from this also, so. Uh, and there's nothing wrong with that. We all live in a community here where we require mutual aid from one county to another. So I just wanted to say thank you to him for this idea, and it seems to be working, and, uh, look forward to the next class. And we celebrated EMS Week last week, and we appreciate our EMS and what they mean to this county. Um, uh, April done a lot of work to, um, organize events and restaurants and those kind of things, so, uh, I, I just want to say, say we appreciate her efforts in that occasion also. That's all I have of District One. Commissioner Bennett?
I would like to reiterate, Chairman Sayer stuff, congratulations to Commissioner Dorsey. And also, uh, our fire training program, uh, I tell, we've all been keeping up with it. It's just really great, and Hart County is really gonna benefit from this by getting so many new firefighters, our volunteer fire departments, and we do need more, as he said. And I also like to thank all the people that make this county function as well, the ones that's in place here. Everybody from our administrations, the road departments, our rec departments, just the whole shooting match, all of our court systems. Everybody just does a great job and kind of runs like a well-oil machine here in Hart County at this point. Um, of course, everybody's got their ups and downs, and we, we work those out. But, uh, as far as in my district, everything's running pretty smooth there. Uh, two of my constituents, the bushhogs, are moving into District One, moved in today, I think, as a matter of fact. And I'm just, uh, like to say, hopefully, everybody had a great Memorial Day weekend, and for all of those that participated in the events and the different functions that went on with that. Miss Ingles back here, I know, was part of that, so. Anyways, we want to thank them for all the efforts that they've put into this and for us, Hart County, to have a great Memorial Day season. I don't think we had many, uh, wrecks going on or a whole lot as far as, uh, anything in a bad way. A little bit of bad weather there Saturday afternoon disrupted a few things, but outside of that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I got.
All right, we'll move it to District Two. Commissioner Teasley?
I want to add, okay, what you said about Mr. Dorsey, congratulations, appreciate the efforts. I'll say that Jason Haley's doing about getting, getting these guys involved at the school, and I appreciate our EMS and our public safety. Um, Monday, I attended the veterans' memorial at the courthouse. There was a good crowd there. Carter Tucker done a real good job. And, um, Herman Fulgham, you know, also involved in it. There's a lot of veterans there, and like what Commissioner Dorsey said, like in his prayer, I appreciate the past, present, and future, and that's all I got.
Okay, District Four, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, as we look back at yesterday's holiday and what it means to us, just remembering and honoring those that, um, those men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. And, uh, may we never forget that and that ultimate sacrifice. And looking back over the weekend, is, of course, is one of the weekends that's, um, I guess, a, a big point on the schedule as far as events goes, and kudos to the ladies at the chamber. You guys did a phenomenal job. I heard from several folks this weekend, the consensus was that the cars and guitars continue to get better and better every year, and they were looking forward to next year. Unfortunately, they didn't get to make it. Little girl decided to start running a fever, so we were unable to come, but from what I heard, it was a very successful event. Um, just want to also, um, keep the family of Max Martin in your prayers. Uh, Max was a predominant, um, member of our county and our community here. He was a pioneer in the agriculture field, um, you know, things as far as conservation and land stewardship. He was forefront, ahead of, um, other folks in that industry and led the way. And in his, in his work and his lifetime, um, his achievement that will live on for years for the amount of time and effort and, you know, really blood, sweat, and tears that he put into that land. Um, and just want to keep our thoughts and prayers with that family. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District Five, Commissioner Dorsey?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their support, encouragement. Those in District Five who supported me, even those who didn't, um, I'm still here for you. It's, uh, it's been an interesting campaign, to say the least. Um, out knocking on doors. At least nine out of 10 doors I knocked on. People are sick of growth in this county and the city. Um, that message was clearly communicated. They're very concerned about our rural character being eroded away at all ends with all the growth. And, uh, if you go back and look at the, my election last Tuesday and the city council election last year, growth was the big deciding factor, I think. Uh, I know growth was a big one in, in the one that I was just in, because I got out and I went and seen as many people as I could every day. I mean, you guys know that. I told you from where I was at, you called me, I was out knocking on doors. But growth, growth, growth. People are sick of growth, and, uh, I can't emphasize that enough. Uh, we're gonna have growth, but we gotta stay on top of it. Uh, there's a lot of things that's been approved that haven't even taken effect yet. And, uh, there's decisions that we're gonna have to make going forward. But I just want to reiterate, uh, the message that, uh, was clearly communicated to me out of District Five. Um, that being said, I wanted to move on to bush hogging. Um, we're not gaining any ground on bush hogging. Um, I know you all, y'all are getting complaints too. Um, I talked to Terrell today, and we're gonna talk about tractor, but, um, I think we, and we've had to do this in the past. I think we need to be running these bushhogs five and six days a week right now. Uh, because this is a public safety issue, and we need to get this stuff cut. Um, because the last thing we want to do is have somebody get hurt or something run out. But unfortunately, it is the nature of the business of trying to maintain the side of the roads, and these intersections grow up quickly. Um, but I think we really need to, and I don't know what everybody else feels, but I think that we need to start running these bushhogs more than four days a week. And if we have to pay a little overtime, we have to pay a little overtime. But I think that's in the best interest of all of us. Um, so I just wanted to kind of see how everybody felt about that. And Terrell, I briefly discussed it earlier this afternoon. Um, but that is one thing we've done in the past. Uh, getting another tractor will help some, but the problem is, we're behind now, and the only way we're gonna catch up is we, we gotta put more effort and resources in it.
All, all we'll need from the board is authorization for the overtime.
I'll make that motion that we authorize the county administrator to, uh, make whatever decisions he needs to do, and we'll fund the overtime out of contingency or take it out of general fund balance to cover the overtime.
We should have any contingency.
Do we have a request from the department head for overtime?
No.
You're not changing their four-day week? You just looking, doing overtime or just getting some that wanna work? I, I'm confused.
We're, we're basically saying we're, we're authorizing them and the county administrator to have them work five or six days a week, whatever he.
If they wanna work.
I don't think you're gonna have, have a choice here. This is a public safety issue.
So not we're required, this isn't an option, we're required to work more?
Right, and there's other people. There may be some that wanna work, and there may be some that don't. I mean, let them manage it and be done with it.
So would it be volunteer or?
Oh, that's, that's, I mean, we'll do whatever y'all want to. I would suggest we try the volunteer basis.
I think.
That's the way to go, but if you can't get volunteers, you're gonna have to work.
Most, most of them want some extra time, and even if they're not on the bush hog crew, they can still, if they're gonna run the bushhogs, they can still come from some of the other section and then run the bushhogs when we can't.
Well, we got one crew running right now, right?
Uh, we got two tractors running, and I'm not sure they're running in the same crew or, or split up. We got three, we got three tractors that runs. We got one that's in the shop, we're gonna discuss later.
Just completed like Ridge Road a few days ago and, uh.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have enough to split the crews up like we usually do, north and south.
And that's part of where our problem is, as well, from behind, and the rain we've had, it just makes it grow faster.
Well, I'm, I'm along with anybody who wants to work a couple times on Fridays, but I wouldn't wanna change their four-day week.
Again, no, that's entirely up to you. I would suggest volunteer first.
That's why you don't have to do it.
And that may take care of the problem.
It may, I mean, a lot of people don't have anything else on Friday.
But at the end of the day, it's our responsibility to make sure this gets done. Whatever we have to do, we have to do. If people want volunteer, then it'll be up to Terrell to, to make it work. So that's my motion.
What was your motion?
That we authorize the county administrator to do what he deems necessary.
Pay overtime?
And to pay overtime out of either contingency or fund balance, regardless of which one.
I think we'd be all right out of contingency, I don't think we'd have to touch.
I'll give you a second on that.
And then, so we can get these roads.
And that's working through the rape department head? Department head and then his input?
It'll all be under the county administrator's leadership.
I just, I just contacted Shannon, say, we need to volunteer for the weekend.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey?
And if we need to work Saturdays and Saturdays, I'm good with that. I mean, you know, whatever we can do, we need to get done.
Oh. Do, do we have numbers in front of us? What, what's this gonna cost?
We don't know how many is gonna work.
That's the problem, I mean, if we got all, how many of them, so 20 of them?
No, 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 no.
Well, we, we, no, no, it ain't everybody.
He's got 22.
You'll, you'll, you'll need, for every tractor, you gotta have a truck in front and truck in back.
Right, yeah.
Uh, so you're talking about a minimum of three people. Uh, if you're running two tractors.
Worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario is nine.
Worst-case scenario, I'd have to, I can say this.
But it's not gonna be nine right now, because you're down a tractor. Right now, it'll be six.
Oh, yeah, at the most. And, and we're well under budget in that department, so it's not like it's gonna throw it outrageously over. But again, I have to have you, I can't authorize that kind of stuff without the board doing it.
So when you say well under budget, I mean, you got a percentage, I mean.
Well, this is just to get caught up, you know, it's not a.
Well, I mean, usually we.
I'd be glad to run it for you, bring it back off the top of my head, I don't know.
Less than $5,000.
There you go, that's what, that's what I was thinking, was the number. Because usually we debate any type of spending pretty heavy. We're about to throw out.
Correct, I'd say.
The option of everybody.
I'd say between five.
Get overtime.
Yes, it's a total yes, between four to $6,000, $7,000, somewhere in there at the most. Because again, it shouldn't take but a couple of weeks to get caught up, and then once it's caught up, hopefully, when you keep up.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five of eight.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, anything on a detail from Whitworth, Terrell, have you heard?
Uh, they're supposed to start it last week. The sergeant came out last Tuesday and said they wasn't quite, didn't have everything quite set up. He'd be back out this week now. Now, Judd didn't come out today, did he? But again, Judd is their contact. They contact him when he comes out, he gives them a list of roads we want cleaned. But we didn't hear anything from them today, and it may be because of the holiday messed them up this week, I don't know. We'll give it to Thursday and see. But Tuesdays and Thursdays, supposed to be the two days a week we get them.
All right. And I don't know if I mentioned it while they got over, but along with thanking Jason Haley and the county fire department, I want to thank the school system too for allowing us to use their facilities and be able to coordinate this through their system. We appreciate the county school system supporting us with this. So thank you to the Martin County Schools.
And I had it written down, I didn't mention it. I do want to thank the chamber for the cars and guitars too. I don't want to, I had it written down here, so I apologize for getting sidetracked.
Well, I forgot to thank you, so we're forgetting stuff. Congratulations.
All right. Get the code out.
We'll get it all out in a minute.
I ain't getting into that.
All right, here we go. Here we go. We're going to start off some old business here. Bid awards for football uniforms.
You'll see the bid tab attached there, and you'll see the recommendation from the recreation advisory board. Under the football, they recommend Go Sports USA Incorporated. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, Go Sports, and I got to read my notes here. Yeah, Go Sports USA Incorporated, which happens to be a low bidder.
I make a motion that we take the rec advisory board's recommendation awarding Go Sports USA.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Brown. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion?
Just a question. Terrell, do you know why nobody locally bid on this?
No.
I was wondering the same, huh?
Football jersey.
I mean, you would think somebody, Dillard's or somebody close by would.
Dillard's doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, they don't.
I think it's the type of jerseys, just, it's a lot more difficult.
I mean, they was all contacted via advertiser and via email from Jean. She emails everybody on the bid list for every bid.
Y'all don't do them tearweight jerseys anymore.
Actually, Dillard's was bought out by V S.
It's in Dallas, Texas.
All right. You got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. All right, we'll move on to bid award cheerleading uniforms.
Again, the bid tabs are attached. The rec advisory board recommends awarding to Cherry, which is a local business.
I make a motion to award this to Cherry Sport.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. We'll move on to bid award photography.
Again, the bid tab attached, their recommendation is award to sportography, which has done it for the last, I don't know how many years.
Make a motion to award it to sportography.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. All right, next on the agenda is the, under old business, solar farm ordinance discussion. I know we had some samples of ordinances back prior to, a few months back, but this is something that we've had moratorium on twice, and we need to get focused on what we want in a solar farm ordinance. I liked the one from Morgan County because it was kind of short and it was to the point. But there's some detail, I think, that we need. One thing, I was talking to Ken Parks, I think is the name, he's with the forestry commission. And he says, whatever we do in our ordinance, we need to put enough space between those panels so the fire trucks can get in between them. How much distance, 15 foot?
No, no. I would, I would say 25 to 30 foot.
In between each panel?
If you got a twist in it all.
He says that they're bad, lightning's going to strike them sometime or another. You've got dead grass under them. And so, to make it easier for your fire departments, they need to be spread apart.
If you're going to have a ladder truck in there, you're going to need a lot more to put in feet because you're going to have to put the outriggers out and everything else.
Well, I mean, I don't know about having a ladder truck. I don't know about fire. I'm just saying that they want, he says be able to put a fire truck in there.
Yeah, I mean, our fire knockers now are pretty good-sized trucks, and not too short like we used to have, so.
Once you get in there, you've got to have real work too.
Correct, correct.
25 feet.
25 to 30 foot, I'd say.
Then you'd be able to have a radius to turn.
Well, you're going to have to have a radius on the end to make those turns. And again, you take a 60-foot cul-de-sac radius, it's tight for, it's tight for a regular truck, but it can't make it. A ladder truck takes 90 foot.
Let's look at, if everybody's in agreement with those distances, I mean, Kim, go ahead and put it in there. You have Kim, the authority, go ahead and put that in there. And we talked to her about some other things later on, too. As far as sizes and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I think we've got to look at it from a residential and a commercial standpoint.
Right.
And I think, whatever you do, obviously, you want a distance between these things if they're going to be freestanding from the house. Some people are going to put them on the house.
Obviously, I think that's right.
So I've got some concerns that I have not had a chance to talk with Ken about. You and I talked about earlier today.
Well, just note that down, what we've got so far right there, and then we'll talk about that later on, and then.
Which one are you operating off the most? Would it be the Morgan County or this from UGA? The one we received, received, it's the Georgia, we might as well throw this one out.
That's true, yeah, I agree.
I mean, there's, obviously, there's points in here, I guess we could piggyback on.
Oh, yeah.
Um, in our comprehensive plan, it clearly states repetitively how we should place certain things in certain areas. Can we not use that map, that comprehensive plan map and the plan itself in verbiage in the ordinance to dictate where we can put these?
Because that's, I mean, we're going to have these wherever. And the comprehensive plan, I mean, it probably says it 200 times in there specifically in places within those color-coded areas.
Outzone, you're going to be limited.
I just don't know why the comprehensive plan, I mean, we keep leaning back on it, why can we not just use it as part of our ordinances? But that's why I ask you, because you have the legal advice.
My non-attorney opinion is it's a changing document because it has to be renewed every number of years. That would be the only reason I could think, that why you couldn't lay on as much from ordinance as you could something else.
I did say the one that I was reading here from the Georgia model solar zoning ordinance, I didn't feel like the setbacks were enough. And I think the verbiage was clear enough on vegetative buffer as well as, what was the other thing? Tree removal. I think that was going to be a big one. When you're looking at prospective parcels, removing, you know, mass removing of trees to put these, you know, big solar farms in there was going to be pretty much defeating the purpose. It's not very green to remove trees to put these things in there. But I definitely felt like the setbacks need to be more, whereas this one referenced 15 feet and 20 feet from the road, I felt like it needed to be more, especially more distance between residential. If there's a residential house, it'd be a pretty significant setback there. And a clear defined visual buffer. Because I know sometimes, I think it was you, Commissioner Teasley, that talked about going past some of these solar farms and they being eyesores.
I think a good point too would be, if you're going to do these things, is use the setbacks from our subdivision ordinance because some of these roads may be wide, and these are going to be here for years to come if we permit them. So there's a lot of things that need to be ironed out.
Lastly, I just want to throw out my opinion. I know that we keep going back and forth on wanting to do it ourselves, and I like doing the ordinance ourselves too, but we have a lot on our plate right now, especially for our council. You know, maybe we need to think it, shopping this out as far as allowing someone else to write it for us, bring it back to us, let us red ink it, make the changes that need to be made. But I'm going to leave that to you guys for discussion. But that's my viewpoint, is I think we should send this to maybe the ACCG or one of these other outfits that we're linked with to help us write this. I mean, it's not a subdivision ordinance. We're talking about a solar farm ordinance, surely we can get these guys to help us out a little bit here.
Last time, didn't you meet somebody, GMRC or some other?
Well, we pay them a lot of money, we might as well use them.
The problem is, you start using these bureaucratic agencies, you're going to get something like what you got right there. And I mean, I think we could do this pretty simple. I don't think it'll be that hard to do.
If they do come back, because I know that obviously, they had the black spot from the 90s. You know, if they do come back with something that doesn't fit, then I think that should be on us to correct that and tell them, you know, this is not fit of our comprehensive plan and where we want to be. Because it sure would be nice to have some outside help and outside source to lean on when we are overran with multiple things like we are now.
Okay. And one other thing, and we'll wrap this discussion up unless y'all have something else, but one other thing, I think the state has preempted us as a local government from bonding these properties because the state is going to do it themselves. So that's one part that we really don't have to look at now that, you know, we were looking at before. So we'll end that discussion there unless anybody else has got anything. And we'll move on to Article 10, mobile home and RV parks revision discussion.
What I've done in the packet, I took just the RV park section of it. And what the first thing you see there with the red, the strikes and the red writing on it, that's just my view of the initial problem for the existing one. It by no means is ready for any kind of first reading or anything else. But that's what I've seen. Mainly, is the approval process, where it's not up to my position to approve these things. These things have an impact on the public. They need to be approved by the board. And that's why I changed the beginning of it, that it's got to go through board approval, not just my office. And again, under two, I think the acreage needs to be increased some. That's entirely up to y'all. But the main thing is the density. If you'll see the wording, I changed it, changed it to what the original ordinance said, seven per acre. But it was at seven total acres. My opinion, it needs to be the seven acres, seven per acre density in the area where the RVs are at.
Now, on number five, is that an added paragraph?
Again, that's, yeah, that's just put in the assured and short term. They're not supposed to stay in these things over 30 days.
I was just wondering if it was an added paragraph.
And it wasn't spelled out real plain in the ordinance. So that's why I put that in there, just to be sure it was plain, everybody understood it.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I got a question.
And the setbacks, again, from 50 to 100 foot from a road. And another thing, I think I didn't have time to put in here, is advertising. The surrounding neighbors and community needs to be able to know these things are coming into their neighborhood. Because it makes a, it makes an impact on the neighborhood these things go in. I'm not saying good or bad about them. I'm just saying, I personally feel that the neighbors and the public need notification of what's coming in instead of just coming through my office and, there it is. So again, that's just my take on it. And I have attached several other ordinances from different counties, so you can kind of see how they're addressing the stuff. But like I say, we don't have anything at this point ready for any kind of first reading or anything like that. We just, I'm looking for guidance on how y'all want to go.
I think the density needs to be changed to no more than four per acre.
That's entirely up to y'all.
I understand. But I'm just throwing it out there because it's 6,200 square feet, the space size, that's seven per acre.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they've got to density down, but it's the actual acres they're using for the.
I understand. But I think it still needs to be worded that way.
Yeah. But you look at them now, and under that other, they says that, but they're stacking them up 10 foot apart.
Yeah. Because they can put it anywhere on the properties.
Right. They're, yeah, it's 10 acres, they can say, I can put 70 sites in, well, they'll stack all them 70 sites on two acres.
And they get having a little bit of space, but in an RV park situation, you're going to want them to be closer. I've never seen an RV park that had huge, spread-out lot sizes. And then, where you get in that is, you could potentially be, you know, if you're spreading it out more and requiring more land, then you're taking away land that could be used for agricultural purposes, could be used for something else. I don't think there need to be, definitely need to be changed as far as that gross need to be taken out. I would just like to look further into the, how many per square feet or how many per acre. Because I feel like you're not going to really accomplish anything by spreading them out. Seven, seven is not a bad number. I'd kind of run it on a piece of padding paper.
Yes, yes.
When is enough enough, though, guys?
Well, seven, 6,200 feet, you got a.
When is enough enough?
But your unit's 320 feet.
When is enough RV parks enough?
I think just what I'm reading right here right now, this is going to shut it down, what I'm getting at. When you start putting seven on an acre, nobody's going to build one.
That's the way it is now. That's what, the way they're doing it now, but the way the language is, it's not, it could be construed to be something totally different.
With the language being changed, when you go to seven per acre, things are going to change.
That's the way they've been built now, is it not, Terrell?
That's what it is now, seven.
Yeah.
But they're not doing that now.
It's seven per gross. It's lit, that word gross is in there.
They're stacking them up.
And that's all I took out was the word gross.
But like I said, I kind of drew some lines and drew it out. If you hold it at that, I don't think anybody's going to build any. And then you got these setbacks that's going in here.
Again, let me, what I put down is just merely suggestions. It has nothing, nothing to do with the end product. It's just suggestions.
When you've got a 400-foot unit and you set it on 6,200 feet, that's a lot of space. Unused space. You're using less than 10% of the space. I mean, I'm up for whatever. But I'm just saying seven.
What are the densities, or what is the density at Payne's Creek per acre, camp sites per acre? You have any idea?
Way more than that.
They spread out pretty good there.
They're a lot more than, they're a lot more than what I got in there.
That's what I'm getting at, and that's a popular place. That's why I say.
I know, we'll check on it.
I mean, I had to go back and run it, but it's well more than 6,400.
Yeah, we're looking at two different things. One's for recreational, and one's, I mean, an RV park is for a place for people to stay.
Yeah.
Whereas a, what Payne's Creek is, is a recreational park for vacationing.
But that's a short term. 30 days are left.
At Payne's Creek, it's 12 weeks.
You can.
Yeah, this is a stopover itself here. You can't stay 30 days maximum.
You move, you move spots.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I know for a fact that one or two of them got in their mind that people can stay here as long as they want to.
Yeah. Well, technically, I mean, that's, we could put 30 days, but if I'm on site one, I can move to site 10.
Again, you've got to move it. And Payne's Creek or any core parts, the same way. You've got to move it off that site the next number of days.
But for Payne's Creek, two weeks.
Four, 10 days.
And we just adopted whatever the core rule was when we took Payne's Creek over. That's the core rule that we just kept.
And I know I'm beating a dead horse, but once again, you know, where do we want these things at? And our comprehensive plan repetitively says that it wants certain, that the people who were on that committee and the people who spoke out from our community specifically want things like this in certain areas. And I don't know how we can do it verbally to.
You don't have no zones.
Well, there's got to be another way, or, I mean, we have, we have to use that comprehensive plan to incentivize things like this to be closer to the corridor, closer to industrial parks or, you know, higher density areas. Because where, you know, we've seen several of these pop up and they weren't necessarily in the most ideal situations or locations. Because usually in an RV park situation, you got workers, people that are working here during the weekend, then pretty much going back home on the weekends. You take Plant Vogel, for instance, I mean, there's RV parks for days, which is needed because those people live there during the weekend and then they come back on the weekend. So, in my theory, in my head, something like this would be more beneficial, you know, closer to the industrial park where maybe there is seasonal labor, something of that nature, serve a purpose, doesn't need to be, you know, in District Five, taking up a perfectly good pasture.
Okay, let's just take this and, and, and let's look it over more.
And please, send, send me your thoughts and ideas and I'll try to jot them down as a note in them and we can, y'all can debate it out.
And we didn't even get to the mobile home part.
No.
I think the main one we were saying was the RV because the mobile home already had the planning and, and the procedures in place where it came to us and.
May, maybe, I'd have to go back, I think it does.
The RV was the one that, it just went, it went to you and then it was ten acres and there was.
I checked, I checked all five checkmarks and it was done.
Mobile home one's going to be one we got an update to.
That's good, with the board, we'll move on to some new business.
Good.
Uh, and like I said, email Terrell your thoughts or whatever on those and we'll continue next meeting with that. Reappointment for private sector, GMRC board.
Make a motion to reappoint Mr. Bill Chafin.
Next.
Currently didn't come, but.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to reappoint Mr. Shaken and a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh eight. We'll move on to credit for experience in nine-one-one.
Yes, the new hire in nine-one-one, she has four years' experience, the mission is requested two years' experience to be given to her. She is post-certified and she's ready to go. She may have, she's working tonight.
Make a motion, we grant the two years as requested.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teas, any discussion?
Retro to her hire date.
Yeah, it was hired this, this past pay period, so.
Okay. All right, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh eight. All right, then we'll move on to legacy link.
This is a standard letter of commitment, we do every year, matching funds.
Make a motion to approve. Same as that one we did last year. Same as that one we did this time last year.
Do them every year, yeah, yeah.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Brown to give me the authority to sign it.
Sure.
And second by Commissioner Teas.
Yeah, go for it.
All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh eight. All right, now we'll move on to permission to be it seal coating.
Yes, as part of the fifty-three, as part of the fifty-three-eleven grant this year, there was a certain amount of money included for improvements to sites. And it's thirty-two, thirty-six thousand or something like that.
Is that going to cover the seal coating? I read through there, I didn't know if that's a hundred percent.
We got to put ten percent with it, so.
Well, you won't know until the bids come back in anyway.
Yeah, we won't know that until the bids.
I'll make a motion, bids to go out for the.
Well, we got to follow all the, we got to check off all the boxes as we do this to be available for the run.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five oh eight. All right, then we'll move on to, I'm sorry, we forgot to do twelve F about the tractor, didn't we?
No, it's thirteen F.
Oh, it's thirteen, I'm sorry, okay, I just thought I made a mistake.
Basically, what it is, one of the.
Well, we got to get the city of Royston first.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to get ahead of myself now.
All right, city of Royston annexation partial, four-eighty-five Highway, once or town, what, started?
I got the email, what's the date on?
May seventeenth, it's May third.
Well, when, when I got it going, it was the seventeenth.
Seventeenth to ten-fourteen.
It was right after the last, our last meeting.
And we have forty-five days from seventeen, correct?
There is the, help me see it, that's the parcel right there.
What I read, they asked for R-two zoning there and everything else around it's R-one.
This will have no impact on the county at all.
Yep.
No roads, no nothing.
There's a zoning map, it's a parcel right here.
And that's all that's R-one next door to it.
More than likely, it's R-two, town, town houses is what you're looking at.
Could be a professional park to professional services.
My understanding is that there's been no plan or any indication submitted as to really what they want to do with it. So, Royston does have a work session Tuesday, if y'all wanted to submit any questions to them.
Well, I mean, I guess we'll have to, we always require the city of Hartwell to give us a plan, a proposed plan in place. So, we at least going to have to be consistent here and ask Royston to do the same.
Well, the, the thing about Hartwell, there's been impacts on infrastructure, roads and that kind of thing, with this being on state highway, I don't know that it's, this midway road, that's a private road.
Private road, correct.
But then there's zoning, they have what they call HB highway business as well, why didn't they just apply for that? Because they got highway business around it, above it there, not below it, but above it.
Oh, you're talking back to the right?
Left, back toward intersection.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's what they call their HB highway business, I knew it on me, but anyway, I was reading through it, looking at it.
That's all subdivisions around there, that's all woodland manor, that's all housing. And across roads, agriculture. Right there, that white one, right there, Terrell, three o'clock, right there.
Yeah. You see the pinks, the pinks are the highway business.
That's just where the, their businesses are, that's where the motel and then Little Japan and Dollar General.
Right.
But all that yellow is woodland manor subdivision.
Oh, that's, yeah, woodland manor, and the subdivision behind it's still the county.
I personally don't have an issue with it, I'm just stating us to be consistent with what we're asking from the city of Hartwell and other cities.
Trying to get some more information, Terrell.
Yeah, I spoke to Mayor Keith Turman today and he was going to get back with me, obviously didn't have time because I.
This is the first application, this is the first paperwork we got.
We're still in our window, next meeting. I, I, I'd say let's take no action tonight, just for the fact that there's not a plan here and we.
We have plenty of time. We have plenty of time.
So.
We'll know something next time.
All right. All right, Terrell, let's go back to tractor then.
That's John Deere calling you right there?
Yeah, they want to know if we're going to pick it up today or not.
They need a screenshot of everything.
I can't find the button to mask the kill it. What it is, one of the tractors, our main tractor, Bush Hall tractor, it's got transmission going out in it. It's got a little six thousand hours on it and our estimate, guesstimation without tearing it apart is about ten thousand dollars for repair.
Downtown.
In downtown, downtown is a weird thing. James Short, the dealer, has one like we already have, we bought last year on the yard in stock. And I'm sorry, I, I let it, take my paper back, we haven't had the exact number on it. But the time we trade that one in and they allow us to eight thousand dollars on it, it's, we'll have about forty-eight thousand in it, less than ten thousand dollars, we'd have to pay to get to it and fixed.
I make a motion, we can do it.
You know, and I'll get the exact number back to her associate.
And trade the other tractor.
Correct, we'll trade that one in. And they do have it in stock, it's sitting on the yard, isn't it?
State contract price?
It's the state contract, correct.
I'll give you a second.
State contract, the price on it's about, it's sixty-one thousand, I think, is the state contract price, on the time you take eight thousand off, it's, it's whatever that balance is.
We'll end up thirty-eight, or something like that.
No, forty, it'd be forty-six, forty-eight.
I'm, no, I'm preaching to the choir here, but you, you guys are all aware that the lifespan on this equipment is not going to last like it has the previous twenty, thirty years. So, I, I would recommend us as a board to work with the department heads, with Terrell, whoever it is, to get a long-term plan in order so we can start looking at what's going to be the financial impact of us replacing X amount of tractors and equipment every so many years, because the death, the, the regulation stuff is just going to keep on coming and, and, and they just.
Right now, this one.
At all.
So, basically. Replacing this one, we got one more that's probably going to have to be replaced in a couple of, three years. That's, we, we've kind of averaged buying one new in a year for the last several years, or trading in or getting a new one. So, we got.
Trade it in before it breaks down would be.
Well, we'd be better off, too.
That's what I'm saying, why, why don't we just say we're going to do it?
We get to a hard spot and then we've got to do something, so.
I mean, it would be nice budget time if we had that in front of us.
Sure.
And not just road departments, several departments need to have that, we need to have a long-term plan. But with the change in equipment and regulations, it's going to get worse where it gets better. You can't buy these old tractors anymore, and so we've got to have a plan. That's them again, you better hurry.
Y'all see the way my life is, don't you?
That's just one of the two cents.
Yeah, the one with trading into caboas.
We, we need to put in a motion that this is a state contract purchase because we're waiving our purchasing policy by taking a state contract.
Correct, it'd be purchased under the state, your stated order contract.
That way there's no confusion, somebody questions us.
Me and my second to the state contract policy.
It's coming out of this block script.
Oh, I make a motion, as a state contract price coming from Spox.
And to waive the purchasing policy because of the, we're waiving the purchasing policy because we're doing it on a state contract.
All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five oh eight.
Eddie.
Michael.
All right, now we'll move on to public comments, anyone here, public comment? All right, if not, can we get a motion to executive, to exit executive session for litigation and personnel?
Give me a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown? Second by Commissioner Bennett. We'll call for a vote, all in favor.